Hello, my name is Mark DeSalvo. I'm the elected town moderator here in North Andover. Welcome to our fifth edition of an effort to bring information to voters about Town Meeting. You're all welcome to Town Meeting, which will be taking place on Tuesday evening, May 10th, at the North Andover High School, starting on time at 7:00 PM. I want to thank NACAM and our executive producer and producer and their staff, Brian Frazier, who has so pithily named this effort today on the warrant. I think we might keep that name going forward.
I like it.
Here with our town manager, Andrew Mailer, our new superintendent of schools, Dr. Jennifer Price, who is having her first Town Meeting experience this year. She'll be just fine. And another old hand, Bill Callahan, who is the chair of the Finance Committee. We're going to go through the warrant. We're going to talk about some of the things, not all of them, on an exhaustive basis, but some of the things that are most important. And I think we'll just dive right in as we try to collectively make Town Meeting a fair, open, and efficient experience for all who participate and for the benefit of the entire community who's impacted by what happened at Town Meeting. So let me make that as my second invitation for the import of all of you to please come to Town Meeting, because so many vital decisions are being made, and every vote counts, and most particularly at Town Meeting. The budget is our policy document, and most people don't have an appreciation how the numbers translate into that which actually gets done. We have collectively more than $100 million in spend in our community, and I thought we'd start talking generally about the budget and ask the town manager to fill us in. Andrew?
It's great. First of all, let me say that the process this year, I think the process has improved every year. Sometimes that's just a result of the parties at play being more experienced at the process. I've been here for four and a half years. I know Bill's been involved for the last couple of years. We had a moderator change near the beginning of my time, and obviously it's Jen's first year through, so we've been very fortunate. I think the level of communication this year has been exceptional. It's been at the highest level, probably in my professional experience over 25 years we had. They were formal conversations, but in many ways they were just conversations. And I think that's the best way for everybody involved to understand what's happening in the budget process. So it was fantastic from our perspective.
Great.
From a financial point of view, as it relates to the overall warrant, it's a year in which we all enter Town Meeting at a point of having a point of comfort, feeling like we're meeting those reserve standards that we put in place for the last couple of years, and allowing our services to begin to continue to make some progress from where they were during the Great Recession, '08, '09. We've really made some real progress on that. So it's a very uplifting year from a financial perspective, and I think that'll be evident to the Town Meeting members.
Just generally, your first experience with a town budget as a superintendent of schools?
Yeah, I mean, I think having Andrew with his incredible knowledge of how to build a budget was so helpful as a brand-new superintendent. So that was incredibly helpful. I also think that I spent a lot of time, as part of my entry, really listening to the town about what we need within our schools. And there's some real needs within our schools, and it was exciting that even in my first budget, I was able to really address those needs. And I'm excited to talk about those, but really address some of the glaring needs within our schools. And I felt the process was incredibly collaborative, and I'm excited to stand with everyone at Town Meeting and present what I really feel is our vision for next year for North Andover. And I don't see it as one person's vision or another person's vision. It's really our vision. And I think even with the percentage increase that we have, which is just the beginning steps in terms of, I hope, my time here in North Andover, I really do feel very strongly that next year, the North Andover Public Schools are going to be better than they are right now.
Well, that's encouraging. Bill, let's stay on process for a little bit. Maybe explain in 15 seconds what the FinCom actually is, and tell us about the conversations that you had with interested parties.
Sure. Well, the FinCom is really nine normal citizens who get involved.
Are you sure that they're normal citizens?
Well, some are.
I appoint them. I'm not certain that we cross that.
Jen and I should feel a little uncomfortable. Starting to get a little concerned.
And the idea is that we look through the budget with the kind of a layman's eye to review the budget and look into some of the issues that happen in the budget from year to year. We play like an oversight or sort of watchdog role more than anything else. And our process really starts in the fall by getting together and forming part of the Revenue and Fixed Cost Committee that evaluates the revenue sources coming to the town and develops a consensus estimate so that everyone starts in this process back in October and November with the same idea about how much money's coming in the door. So we kind of come to an agreement on that first before we start dividing up the monies. And when Andrew and Dr. Price get to work on their budget, they do so from, you know, a common point. Then after the town manager's budget and the school committee budgets are released later in the year, we hold hearings on different aspects of the budget, meet with the different division heads and department heads and so forth, and hear how the budget's going to work. We also looked into a number of areas in the fixed cost portion of the budget. One thing we particularly focused on this year was the rising pension costs that are happening with the Essex retirement system that supports a lot of our employees, not teachers, but other employees, and looking at how those costs are increasing year over year and understanding, you know, how that's going to work out. So I'd say it's a very exhaustive, collaborative process. It was great to see Andrew or a member of his offices at every meeting. So we ask a lot of the committee, ask a lot of questions. We were very impressed with the level of answers that we got and with the dedication of the people in the town, both on the municipal and the school side. And I would like to echo that it was a very smooth process this year, a very well-developed budget, and it really went well.
Thank you. So let's dive a little bit. Andrew, the total town budget's $92 million or thereabouts?
Yes.
Talk to us about either specific initiatives and/or continuation of initiatives and interests that we've put together as a Town Meeting over the past several years.
Well, I think what we, the first and foremost is we start with the basic level of services. I think one thing we've done really well is reflect on those things we do every day and make a decision of whether or not we're still being efficient about that. So we don't zero-based budget and start from scratch, but we certainly reflect on everything we do to see if there is a more efficient way to do it next year. This budget moves forward at 3.7% for across all town departments. It'll vary from department to department, but in general, that's the case. Major initiatives this year is an updating or the beginning of the process, update a master plan for the community, typically done in towns on an every 20-year basis. The rule of thumb is you should be doing that every 10 years. It just doesn't happen every 10 years. It's too involved, the process. It's a process that'll involve all our residents. It'll take about two years. There'll be a lot of public sessions to gain input, but we've placed the funding into the budget to begin updating the master plan process, something that'll be essential. It'll describe what the community looks like between now and, say, 2030 or 2040. Very significant stuff. The community's evolved a lot over the last 20 years, as we know. It's developed a lot. So the way this group of residents views not only the way we impact their lives today, but how they want to see those moving forward is important. And we're doing a recodification of the town's bylaws, another initiative within the operating budget, which is important. Makes it easier to use. We're moving to an electronic age. We've seen that with the steps that the town and school have taken to invest heavily in technology and recodifying the bylaw, making it easier for residents to get on, follow along, and putting it into a format that they can use more easily is another logical step in our ability to communicate with our residents in the modern environment, which is electronically.
Dr. Price, Jen?
So in terms of this year, I think that there's a number of things in terms of our thinking. First is, you know, again, continuing what we've been doing this year. And that takes up about almost 3% of our increase. So really, the conversation is the additional 0.7%. And a few things I'm pretty excited about. I think the biggest one is actually, one of the things I heard time and time again when I came into North Andover was, can you believe we have one librarian for five elementary schools? And the logistics of that are almost impossible. She is at one elementary school every day, all five days of the week. We've had a really hard time retaining someone. That's not a very exciting job. And so what we've been able to do is actually, two things. First is to add an additional librarian at the elementary level, and then also do something that I think is throughout this budget, which is be very creative with the town. So Andrew and I said, wouldn't it be great if we could actually share a librarian between the Stevens Memorial Library and the schools? And not only is that wonderful in terms of just a shared resource, but it also connects the schools with a fabulous resource within North Andover, which is the Stevens Memorial Library. So the idea here is we're actually going to have two and a half librarians, which means that each librarian's only going to have two schools, or in the case of the half, a school in Stevens Memorial. So that's just an example of us being pretty creative. Another thing that I heard a lot about when I threw my entry was, you know, we used to have world language at the middle school, and through some creative work, we're actually going to be able to bring world language back to the sixth grade at the middle school. Our middle school class sizes are actually the largest in the district, and this allows us to, in the related arts area at least, bring those average class sizes, which are actually close to 30 down, and also bring back French, German, and Spanish, and kids getting a choice of that starting in sixth grade. So that's pretty exciting. And actually, the choices in eighth grade, they get exposure to all of it in sixth and seventh grade. So that's an exciting thing for us. Another thing that I heard a lot about was, you know, Jen, we used to have a lot of reading support in the elementary, and we made a decision a number of years during the difficult times to actually pull our reading support. And we've seen the impact of that, and we've slowly been able to grow that back, and we need more. So we're actually increasing reading by another half. So being able to address some real needs that folks had said to me as part of my entry process, being able to be creative with the town, we also are working collaboratively around some of the shared services like payroll and technology, and just really making sure, as Andrew talked about, what we're doing, we're doing most efficiently. And are there ways that we can collaborate and save money and develop and provide a service as good, if not better, for our employees and for our town? So there's some exciting things there. There's one other part is, you know, one thing that I am concerned about, and I have been pretty vocal about, is our class sizes are pretty large in North Andover. And I'm very excited that part of this is some additional funding to look at, can we add some additional elementary school classrooms onto our schools? I think we really need to address that, especially at the elementary level. And so I'm excited that part of what is on the warrant is looking and starting that process of what's going to make sense, what's going to be feasible in terms of our elementary school classrooms. And, you know, that is a process over time, and I'm very aware of that, but I'm excited that we're going to be able to start it.
Well, apropos of that, Bill, in reading the report of the Finance Committee, which is online at townofnorthandover.com, you specifically called out in a particularly cautious fashion the future of the schools in town.
Right. And one of the things that we did this year in kind of looking across different aspects of municipal and school finance was to benchmark where North Andover stands in comparison to partner communities, and the school committee has done similar work. And what we've seen is that the school department is functioning very, very efficiently, very, very lean. And there is a sense at what point the level of investment isn't quite there to support the important work that the schools do in our town. So it's, I would say, more of a cautionary note that this is an area we really need to look at and pay attention to as a town. We value our schools. It's important that we invest in them properly so that they can have great outcomes. And so, I mean, schools in particular, the 18 communities that I looked at, we had the lowest per pupil expenditure of those 18 schools. And that seems to be pretty consistent across the, whatever group of schools you look at, not just kind of our immediate geographic neighbors, but also if you look across the state, which is, you know, particularly, I think, interesting because there are a lot of areas of the state that are much lower cost than North Andover, even when you look out to the Worcester and Hampton counties and so forth. So we think it's an important area, and we wanted to call attention to it this year.
So are you telegraphing future concern and perhaps addressing those issues and expecting the community leaders and the Town Meeting will recognize that?
Yes.
Jen?
Yeah, I mean, I think I've been pleased that as we've drawn attention to these issues, we've looked at class size, we've looked at per pupil, the town has responded by saying, wow, that's really interesting, and how are we going to address that? The thing I love about North Andover, though, is that we're not going to address it tomorrow. We're going to be thoughtful, and we're going to address it over time, and we're going to address it in a very thoughtful, methodical way. I mean, the reality of the situation is, just because you spend more money doesn't mean you get a better outcome, right? And so the thing that I feel that my staff needs to do, and I need to do, and be kind of the champion, is if we invest money in our schools, what's that going to mean? And I have to come up with, and I should be required, and it should be completely assumed that I'm going to come up with a plan, obviously not me, but my whole entire staff, around kind of what would we do with additional resources? You know, okay, so you have a lower class size, but what does that mean? How's that different for the kid in the classroom? And what does that look like? And if you really think about that, it's not just about the resources in terms of the class size, but also what curriculum are we doing? And one of the things we're working really hard on is developing a consistent curriculum across, especially our elementary schools. How are we differentiating our instruction and making sure that all kids feel like they're getting what they need? How are we making sure that we hire and retain the best teachers to do that? And how are we supporting them to do that? So it really is a long-term vision and a long-term plan, and I'm pleased that with my work with the FinCom and with the town manager, we're seeing that this isn't something that we are going to just, you know, wave a magic wand, and it's going to be different. But if we come up with a thoughtful, well-thought-out plan, I'm hopeful that we'll be able to address some of these issues over time.
Mr. Manager, in your tenure, we've seen the community address significant municipal problems and do so in exactly the kind of fashion that Jennifer just laid out. Are you hopeful about being able to address both whatever new arises on the municipal side, but that which has been identified?
Well, let me break it into pieces for us. So Dr. Price identified the classrooms as something that's part of a facility master plan. It's a good example. Today, I was learned of a second community, a budding community, that's getting into the process of adding a facility master plan, that being the town of Middleton. Andover is in the process as well.
And we're all hands at that.
We're all hands at that. So I think that's a really, we often refer to it probably to the point of boredom with some folks, but we refer to the facility master plan because it was well-thought-out. It's bringing us down to the line. It's getting us the progress we identified, but as Dr. Price identified or indicated, it's not something that can happen overnight. If you look at the differences between what Bill may have identified in terms of where we stand with peer group or whatever cohort you choose to select, because you can select almost any, if you tried to sort of catch up to some of the numbers or make us feel better to be in comparison, you're talking such a staggering figure that it's not going to change. So it begins with the knowledge that what we spend on pupils today, or per pupil cost, has never been in comparison to that cohort. We're not losing pace, although somewhat argue in some cases we are. We're just not gaining in areas where we feel like we should be comparative to, right? So I think what's important to understand is this isn't about, we started even with a whole bunch of places, a number of school districts, and have lost pace. We've done a remarkable job with the school department and the town and the Finance Committee and others of getting creative or finding ways to be efficient. If you look at the same cohort group in terms of spending, we spend below on most in the area, general government, in the area of the police department. So in most cases, we're spending below average, quite frankly, in a lot of different arenas of the services we deliver. It's the fundamental baseline of who North Andover is. It doesn't mean you stay that way, and it doesn't mean we don't recognize the problem and find ways to improve it, schools being one example. But it means that we do so in a methodical and well-thought-out manner. What is unique, I think, is overutilized as a term, but what is quasi-unique in North Andover is we find a way to develop a plan, and whether it's five years, or 10 years, or 15 years, agree to that plan and implement it over time. And that is what has been most successful with us, facility master plan, reserve policies, and the like over the last several years, and it's what we must remain focused on. And the only thing that sort of can derail us is an impatience to get us to some places that we just fundamentally have never been.
As a citizen, I can tell you that I appreciate the thoughtfulness. As a town moderator, I particularly appreciate the ability to be able to present in a staged fashion a defined plan, and that it affords those who come to Town Meeting the fair warning and notion that they are contributing to something with generational impact in a planned way. But it's a good segue. We have 29 articles on this year's Town Meeting, and one other article, which is, we'll be having a special Town Meeting within the regular Town Meeting, and I won't bore you with how that's going to happen, but please come and attend, and maybe we'll entertain you with that transition. But in any circumstance, one of the unique things about open town government is that any citizen has the right to be able to petition the community around something that interests them. And as the budget is clearly the most important thing that we'll discuss, there's a citizen article that's certainly not ancillary to the budget circumstance. And there's been a citizen petition to eliminate, repeal, the local option meals tax that is, has been part of our community for apparently, I think, the last four years. Bill, your committee has taken a very specific position on this. Perhaps you can highlight both the issue and your position.
Sure, sure. So the issue is that the local options meals tax is added to the state meals tax. It's collected by the state. It's 0.75%. 0.75% is the rate at which it applies to restaurant meals. So it's 75 cents on a $100 tab, so to speak. And it was, the legislature passed the legislation in, I think, 2008 to allow towns to opt into it. Most of our neighboring towns have opted into it, and we opted into it after, if it was on the ballot, it was in Town Meeting twice. On the second attempt, it passed. The first attempt failed by six votes. Second attempt, it passed by six votes. So it's obviously a very contested issue. But what I would say is, over the past four years, what we've seen is that the revenue from that tax has gone steadily upwards. Opponents are right to just denote that we're also in a rising economy, so one would expect that a good-like restaurant meals would go up because it's not a necessity. And so people are eating out more because the economy is doing better. But what we've seen is we have a very healthy restaurant businesses in town, and our committee has said that we need this revenue. The reason we think we need this revenue is that generally, as a town, we are heavily dependent upon residential property tax. For about 89%, you know, of what comes in, actually, that's not quite true, but about 89% of the property tax revenue comes in from residential, and 11% from commercial. And there are other sources of revenue, like excise tax and state aid and so forth that come in. But we are, as a town, heavily dependent upon the property tax. And this is an additional stream of revenue, and the important thing about that revenue is it's recurring. It comes in every year. And so...
So if I might, so this year's budget has built in as part of the revenue assumptions that this half a million dollars is part of the budget?
Yes.
And if repealed, depending on what the motion is at Town Meeting, it would have the opportunity to put that half a million dollar hole in the budget. What do you do at Town Meeting? What's your recommendation?
Well, my recommendation would be not to, you know, not to go forward with an increase that we couldn't afford to go with a balanced budget. I mean, there are other options. We could dip into our reserves to make up the difference for this year, but that would just kick the can down the road for next year, because if we repealed the tax and we didn't have the money for FY17, we wouldn't have the money for FY18. So in some things, like personnel decision, you know, what sense does it make to go out and hire a few librarians and then, for one year, and then say, you know, unfortunately, we don't have the funds to support your position?
So your committee would be recommending to the community that it actually slashed the budget by filling in that hole?
You know, we haven't taken a formal position on what we would do, but I think that sort of approach, we want to illustrate what that means.
Has the committee taken, I just want to be clear for the benefit of people, any formal position?
Yes. So we have recommended unfavorable action on that petition.
Okay.
And then, so we're assuming that, when we voted, we said, we're assuming that we're voting on the budget, the revenues and the expenditures, as they're written in a balanced budget. So we're going to raise $92 million. We're going to spend $92 million.
Okay. Jen, I presume that that's not a happy circumstance for you if this were to...
No. So the school committee has talked about this. You know, if there was a half a million dollar shortfall, pretty much the impact on the schools, if it was split in the way that we traditionally split, the 68/32, would be all of the additional 0.7%. So that would mean the librarian, that would mean the world language teacher, that would mean the reading teacher, et cetera, et cetera. So my feeling here is that we are opposed to repealing this tax. This tax has become part of the foundation of the budget, and even if it was able to be, again, as you just talked about, Bill, even if we could take care of it for one year, my feeling is that it would then be kicking it down the can, the can down the road, or whatever that expression is.
Does it can, yes.
So, you know, I would also say, I mean, I'm the superintendent of schools. We are spending close to $3,000 per pupil below the state average. We have class sizes that are among the highest in the state, sixth highest average class size in the state of Massachusetts. I could not, in any good conscience, say that we should be repealing something that allows us to do what we do within our schools. And I frankly think the town of North Andover wouldn't want a superintendent who is saying, yes, we can do this, because I fundamentally believe that we have areas that we need to invest more within our schools. And by reducing our overall revenue by half a million dollars, it's going to impact the schools. And whether it impacts it next year, it impacts it the following year, it's going to impact our schools. And so as superintendent of schools and as the school committee, we feel that that is not in the best interest of North Andover.
I know that the Board of Selectmen will be making a judgment either at Town Meeting or prior to Town Meeting. So this is just an example or a recognition for you to appreciate, that coming to Town Meeting, no matter your opinion on repeal of the meals tax, is really a vital circumstance. So again, I'll iterate my invitation to come to Town Meeting. Let's move on to a couple of other subjects. One of the things that has been, that populates Town Meeting warrants are zoning articles. And for most people, they're enormously mystifying, pages and pages of technical language and particularly legalistic implications and the like.
Couple of maps.
More than a few maps, which some people can read. And perhaps you could at least outline for us what those might be recognizing that we may not be able to sufficiently discuss them.
I understand. And that's why there are hearings associated with the zoning articles, because quite frankly, it has to be something you're interested in or something you're particularly invested or impacted by. So there are four zoning articles, articles nine through 13. There's a fifth zoning article that's a citizen petition. But the four primary zoning articles, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, actually five, have been taken up by the Planning Board. The Planning Board has voted affirmative action on those, and the Selectmen will, at a future meeting, will take some action on those. So as an overview, some of them are just technical corrections. Some of them view a little bit with the activity along the 125 corridor and changing some of the zoning requirements along the 125 corridor, too, to provide sufficient flexibility. We are looking at what we call the 125 corridor, really, from the Haverhill Line back to about Sutton Street on a lot of different fronts. We feel like it's an important economic development engine for us moving forward, but there are some specific issues in that corridor that we're looking at through the zoning, the nature of the use of the properties, what it looks like in the long term. Also, there's a proposal that would increase the amount of units that could be allowed in certain districts that deal with senior Alzheimer housing. And one of these would affect Edgewood in a way that allow them to expand, develop a new development on their existing property for Alzheimer's care specifically. So that's an overview of what the zoning looks like. Again, I don't want to bore you with some of the particulars.
I appreciate that, but they're really important, and I think the Planning Board and those citizens who present articles, it's incumbent on them to do the explanation at Town Meeting in a manner in which we, as laypeople, can truly understand. I know that one of the citizen articles is relative to the redevelopment of the Fergetta Farm, former Fergetta Farm property. And last year, maybe we can talk about, last year, we had some zoning articles having to deal with the, what those old timers like me still refer to as the Davis and Ferber properties.
Yes.
And we've seen some fruit from that right away.
Means seasoned professionals.
Thank you very much. You're kind.
Wanted to make sure. So, you know, interesting enough, from a resident's perspective, where a lot of our services interact or involve our residents on a regular basis, whether that's education or public safety, on the zoning front, what traditionally happens is residents get engaged around a particular project. It's not a criticism, it's the nature of maybe the complexity of zoning, or the, it's just, why do I want to go read and try to understand what's happening there? And I'll say something, something's built in our neighborhood. And so that's the case in a lot of the zoning articles. We've had some success in the past. I think a good example is modifying the downtown overlay district, which included the Mill sub-piece to that zoning overlay district that is really energizing the development that's going on down in the Mill property. There's a lot... There's a lot of new businesses going down there, there's a residential component. And I know there's a general interest and an intensity from our residents about what the community is going to look like specifically on a residential perspective. And I think that it's incumbent, as you've indicated, not just to attend town meeting, but whatever advance work you can do in terms of understanding the articles, what it's going to mean to development in the community is important. We all want more development. We always say that. And then we get down on the particulars and we're not sure if we want that development. And that's human nature, it's the way it works. But if you, I would suggest to anybody, if they read a zoning article and don't understand what it means to them or what it means to the community, they should sit down with someone from my office or someone from the planning department to talk about it. I think it's really important to understand those things because it's, it's just sometimes too difficult in looking at a two-dimensional timing article.
Well, thank you for the invitation on that. And please take advantage of, of the town manager's invitation. One of the things that we've had in town, I think we're celebrating the 15th anniversary of the Community Preservation Act this year. And the Community Preservation Act was actually adopted by our town on the ballot in 2001. And it puts a 3% surcharge on our tax bills in effect. And those monies are expended exclusively by vote of town meeting. There have been some wide, wide impacts relative to that. I know that the Finance Committee has a role in reviewing Community Preservation Act requests. Perhaps you can tell us something about it, Bill?
Sure. I mean, one thing that I like to say when we talk about Community Preservation Acts is they can be, and they are, citizen-initiated. So that people in town and their partners come forward with proposals to improve some aspect of town. And I think we have a few great examples this year. One would be in terms of, and the Community Preservation Act funds three major areas, open space and recreation, affordable housing, and historic preservation. And I think on the open space front this year, there are a couple very, very important projects. And one of which is involves partnering with the Essex Valley, Essex County Green Belt to acquire a conservation restriction on the Eldridge Farm, which is out at the end of Dale Street on the Boxford, North Andover border. It's a beautiful piece of property and there are some plans for trails to be installed and so forth. And I think it's, will really add to the character of our town. It fits in well with a number of different parcels out there that already have restriction easements on them. And so I think it's a great addition to our town's open space availability. And the, the Eldridge family should really be commended for, you know, leaving a tremendous legacy for the town in the fact that this land will, you know, remain undeveloped and allow people to do some recreation on it.
Any other, Mr. Manager, any other things that you might want to highlight relative to CPA?
Yeah, I think, again, the historical preservation pieces and dollars go into the society, historical preservation, excuse me, historical society in terms of work being done at the Parson Barnard House. There's our playground program that was implemented two years ago, which is, again, an example of something that a lot of communities don't do. We made a conscious effort of identifying all 11 of the town's playgrounds and making an investment or developing a plan where every year we're going to invest in a different playground so that we'll be updating all of our playgrounds, whether on the school property or town property. And so there's another good example of that kind of utilization. One I want to identify was a second year investment in affordable housing by funding the Affordable Housing Trust with $100,000. The Affordable Housing Trust is a group in town, which again, quasi-governmental group founded or controlled by our bylaws, where they're purchasing individual homes, rehabbing those and finding North Andover families who couldn't otherwise afford a single-family home or a home in North Andover, placing them into a home. They do great work and they're being funded for the second year with some additional funding beyond their base level of funding by the, by the CPC. So I think that's another great project.
Much appreciated.
And just one thing I'd like to point out, I think one of the things you realize when you start doing this budget and working with the town is just how civic-minded so many of the town's residents are. So that a lot of our conservation land, we had the Conservation Committee in when they talked on their hearing, and we also talked about the Community Preservation Act hearings. The Friends of North Andover Trails, you know, does tremendous work all around town, building trails and so that people can access some of the great recreation spaces that we have. The Friends of the Library, another group, the Historical Society and so forth, a lot of these groups are doing, you know, great work. The various PTOs donating all sorts of time and energy and it's, you know, it's really important and really speaks to the civic-mindedness of, of our community.
Well, thank you very much. By no means has this been an exhaustive review of town meeting, but trying to give you the highlights as to where things stand. In our remaining few minutes, perhaps if anyone has anything else that they'd like to comment on or iterate or particularly point out, I'll start on my left.
Yeah, I just would say that I'm really excited to be in North Andover. Over the last few months, nine months, I've just learned so much. I've enjoyed the trails myself, I've enjoyed the community. I've really learned a lot about how a collaborative, you know, one of the things as a superintendent is there's always a tension between schools and towns and that's what I heard. And I have felt like we've really gotten past that here in North Andover. And that's been wonderful as a superintendent. And I'm really looking forward to my first town meeting and, you know...
We won't abuse you too much, I promise.
I know, I'm a little nervous and, you know, but I'm really looking forward to it. And I'm really looking forward to, you know, one of the challenges as a superintendent is I feel that the, the residents who have kids in schools know who I am and know kind of where we're headed. But I think the town meeting forum is a wonderful opportunity for those who may not be as connected to the schools to start to understand what we're doing and what we're trying to do and, and to build really trust. You know, I am very aware that we have gone through more superintendents than we should have as a town. And over time, I'm hoping that the residents of North Andover come to trust that we are really kind of in line with this town and that the schools are an important part of, but part of, a much bigger community.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, I'd just like to say that, again, it's very important to come to town meeting and it's, it has a direct impact on your fiscal situation year over year with your real estate taxes. I think our committee has done a really thorough job kind of examining the budget. And I think our bottom line message to the citizens of this town is that the, the town is very careful with, with your tax dollars, is spending them pretty efficiently by sort of any measure that we can come up with. And if you read the Boston Globe, you may have noticed of, last month, there was a column, you know, highlighting North Andover with, as one of the towns that's had the smallest tax increases over the past five years of any in the region. So I think, you know, that's my kind of bottom line message to the town, you're getting good value for your investment in the, in the town of North Andover.
Andrew?
Well, two things, conversation and validation. So what town meeting is great for, and we welcome Jen to town meeting, it really is, it's a process I look forward to every year, quite frankly, not just in North Andover, but the North Andover experience has been great. And I think you've helped that along, quite frankly, by promoting the conversation. We have a true conversation where people in a very unscripted way get to ask questions. And as much as we prepare some of those questions, we're not always ready for, but we do the best we can. And validation, we do a lot of work. This, this process begins in September with the selectmen holding a strategic planning session, the school committee holds a similar one over the summer, and moves on to the FinCom in early October. And here we are in early May, months and months after the fact. And for us, when we conclude town meeting, we will have a validation of sorts of the process. We will understand really what the community's thinking because they'll come in an unscripted fashion and tell us what they're thinking. And most of it's good. And sometimes, it's all good in the sense that we get true feedback. Most of it makes us feel good and some may not. But in the end, that kind of dialogue with the community, we leave town meeting feeling like, okay, we truly understand now what the community wants. And this is a great community in that way. People are candid and kind and involved. And all those things make North Andover a really special place.
Well, much appreciated, everybody, for your participation. This conversation that we're having is a continuation, will be continued at town meeting. And I invite you once again on Tuesday, May 10th, at 7:00 PM at the North Andover High School. In North Andover, under my tenure as the presiding officer of town meeting as moderator, we've had some innovations. So it's a wonderfully comfortable experience. It will be broadcast live and livestreamed for those who are unable to attend, although we truly hope, and part of the reason that we do that is to invite you to experience the comfort. It's a very comfortable situation. So please come and participate. We are continuing the innovation of the last two years, slowly and incrementally advancing across the Commonwealth where we are inviting those people who cannot attend town meeting to participate because we know that all knowledge is not necessarily in the room. So those of you who cannot attend and have a query, please go to northandover.com, townofnorthandover.com, I apologize, the town's website. You'll see a button somewhere on that website that allows you to ask a question at town meeting. That is open for the two-week period prior to town meeting. So please contribute. And most importantly, I want to thank these people, the professionals and lay members and, and others of our staffs and citizenry who have helped make town, town meeting and North Andover just a wonderful thing and community to experience. Thank you once again. I appreciate all of your participation and hard work.